The meeting will come to order. We are now holding a meeting, or the March meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation's Board of School Trustees. Will you join me in a salute to our flag?
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight we are happy to have with us Mr. Judd, who is going to be making school presentation from Conneysville High School. Mr. Judd.
Thank you for having us here tonight. I think it was the January meeting that Mrs. Kirchner brought up some points from some of her constituents about what's going on at the high school with iPads. And Dr. Hodges looked straight at me and said, "Mr. Judd will present and we'll find out what's actually going on." So you're going to be involved a little bit tonight and you're going to learn about what is going on. And I'm here to tell you that I'm very happy to be here to show you. We're well into our first year with the iPads and I would like to thank the board for making it possible for our students to have iPads. It was a situation that we had that window of opportunity and most schools will spend two or three years deciding what programs they're going to use and what type of blended learning program they're going to use. And one of the last things they do is they pick the type of technology that they're going to use. Well, we didn't have the chance to do that because we had a limited amount of time to use the money that was available. And I think we still made a great choice. And now we're doing some of the things that we should have probably preloaded. We're finding resources to use and started out slow, but I'm telling you it's snowballing. I wasn't at our last faculty meeting. I had an appointment. I can tell you that from what I've heard about the professional development part of that meeting, there were some things shown to teachers that excited teachers in our building. Almost daily someone comes up with a new way to use these devices and it's engaging kids and it's working. So yet you have to remember, our main goal when we started using the iPads this year was to increase digital learning in our schools. We wanted our students to be digital citizens and we wanted to prepare them to live in this digital world. I've said it before, look around. Almost everyone in here either has a phone. Some people have a phone and an iPad. Anybody have three devices with them today? Terry? So we started the year with the devices and really the only digital resource that every student had on their iPad was their English textbook and the resources, interactive resources that came along with that. So as the year has progressed, we've added many apps that we're using, many programs, and we're looking for things all the time. Social Studies is getting ready to adopt new books for next year and they're looking at online digital resources. So next year we will have two of the core courses that our students take. All the students will have online digital resources. The social studies teachers are specifically looking for some resources that will help them monitor student progress and mastery of standards. And that's something that we just haven't had in the past and an easy way to monitor. So anything else other than the English textbook that we came up with to use was kind of like icing on the cake for this year. And I'm going to tell you, there's lots of icing on the cake. I did, at the end of first semester, I sent a survey to our students and our parents and our teachers. I didn't get quite the response that I wanted, but I did have 343 responses. And although some of the responses, as you can expect from any survey, they were negative, some of them, by and large, the responses were very positive. And by and large, if you look at the scales of the data, we're doing what we wanted to do. And I would like to tell you that the results show that our English classrooms are using digital resources as we had hoped. iPads are being used effectively in other classrooms as well. Student learning has improved with the use of iPads and student engagement has improved with the use of iPads. Those are the questions that I ask and overwhelmingly the responses were yes, that those things have happened. Were there negative responses? Of course there are. There always will be when you give a survey. So there's many positive outcomes. Even today, you know, I walk down the hallway and someone say, "Hey, I have to share this with you. This is what I did in class today or this is what we're going to do tomorrow." So it's an evolving thing and you all are invited at any time to come and walk through our building. Will you find some classes where there's no iPad being used when you're in there? Absolutely. You don't have to use the iPad to be a great teacher. Students don't have to have that iPad in their hands to learn, but it's, in the society that we're in, you know that quite often those students will either have a phone or an iPad in their hand. And if we can get them to use it to learn, then good for us. So I'm going to stop talking. I will tell you that we'll survey the parents and teachers.
I'm sorry, that was gay.
She's getting ready to go. I will survey the parents and teachers and students at the end of the year. We'll analyze the data and we will make changes that are necessary. We're only seven months into this, so we're going to show you some of the icing on the cake tonight. Things that we're doing that just probably will excite you and interest you and you'll say, "I want to learn how to do that." So I'm just going to introduce Vicky Long, who already showed you.
Introduce myself. I swear the volume was down on my iPad. Okay, so let's see if we can get this technology to work. I was voted to do the interactive part, so they're putting me on the spot. So first of all, I'm going to turn on mirroring and make sure that's working for us.
We're going to get you guys engaged.
Hopefully.
You know, there was a bill in front of the legislature that they wanted students to pass a citizenship test before they graduated. I think that's kind of dead for now. You can come back. So what we're going to do is we're going to give you a really short citizenship quiz. It will be anonymous. We're going to put it in fake names.
Yes, so while we're waiting for our technology to reset itself, you're going to have the opportunity to identify yourself when you take the quiz. So if you don't want, you know, if you're thinking you might be a little shaky on the citizenship questions, you can put in my name. You can put in my name if you want. Mr. Judd's name.
Put in Randy Judd.
I don't care. I've already found out I'm no smarter than the fifth grader.
Okay, here we go. We're ready. Is everybody at a screen that looks like this?
No.
Okay, go to your. There you go.
A technical challenge.
Go back to the console and I'll see if it was on your Google.
I'm sure. I know. Actually, I give my grandparent.
Oh yeah, it's that first tab?
Okay, tonight I'm going to talk about assessments and how we can use technology tools to improve that process. Teachers frequently give short assessments to get an idea of what students know, what they don't know, to identify struggling learners. And the key to this process is to collect the data, organize the data, analyze the data as soon as possible.
The first time we do it with students, it's slow because they haven't done it before. But there are classrooms where teachers have quizzes every day when kids come in. They come in, they sign in, the number they have to put in is on the board, it's just automatic and it doesn't take any time at all.
We're good.
We're good.
We're not playing.
We have one more.
All right, so assessments. How can we get student data and use it quickly? In the old days, like last year, I would have typed up an assessment, made the copies, administered the quiz, picked up the copies, taken them home, graded them. And if I wanted to see on specific questions how students did, which ones did they do badly on, which ones did they do well on, I would have had to organize all that data by hand. So we're going to look at Kahoot and see how that helps the process. So here's the way it goes. It's multiple choice. You've got five seconds to really look at the question and kind of activate your prior knowledge because you're going to be awarded points on accuracy, but how quickly you answer. So the first person that answers correctly gets more points. So you've got five seconds to kind of rack your brain and then you're going to, the multiple choice answers are color coded. So are we ready?
Can we just touch the screen?
You just touch the screen. Okay, ready?
The questions will be on the screen.
Did I do that?
Next question one is.
And then you'll have.
Now look up here. There's your choice.
So you'll have to look at the screen and then pick your answer.
So look at the screen and then choose your answer. And you choose with the red for red triangle or the symbol of the answers, your answer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Everyone got it?
I would not want a worst question with my classroom. Absolutely not. Okay, here we go. Mickey is in the lead.
She saw this quiz.
I'm a little versed in that.
What is most illegal grant to U.S. citizens?
Mickey's still in the lead.
Untied. Catching up. Okay, here we go. Teacher. Got to keep him going.
What year was the Constitution?
I think we may have a discussion on this in Conneysville. This might be good when you have a discussion.
Constitution was, James Madison wrote it. It was adopted in 1787. It was adopted by the Continental Congress in 1788, but it was written in 1787.
You're that one green one?
I am the one.
I wonder who that one was.
This does provide quick feedback though.
Guys, I taught this for 30 years, trust me. I went to law school. I had to read it too.
Are we ready? Here we go. It's, there we go.
Question was, were you trigger happy or pure genius?
Or just a pure genius question?
Okay, here's your last chance to be Ann Kay, whoever that might be. Definitely another question we might want to discuss.
No, we don't.
Good for taking it out, good for activating prior knowledge, good for figuring out what they remember from yesterday. Real quick kinds of things that can maybe.
No, I taught social studies for 30 years, guys. I can't help it.
Judy, Hillary Clinton.
Okay, so a benefit here would be.
How fun was it?
A benefit here would be, it gives me good data, it's engaging, it's motivating. If you look at the screen, I know it's small, but this is my data that in the old days, last year I would have had to do by hand. I see question one. I don't want to talk about that much in class. Definitely question three, possibly two and five, and there might be results that come up where you might just want to talk individually with one or two students. So we can look at this by the overall task if we'd like. We can drill down to, I think question five would have been, yes, that's a good one to look at. Notice that we have people answering two years correctly. The display's a little bit slow. Anyway, we had a variety of answers there. We had two years, four years, six years, and eight years. So it's good to see what the students are answering incorrectly. So the old paper and pencil certainly works in some situations, but in this case, if you're just doing a snapshot, you want to see it right away and you want the data so that you can really drill down and know what content is already known and what we need to work on, or maybe what individual student needs to be helped. It's a quick way to do it.
Do you load these questions in here yourself?
Yes.
Okay.
But there are also pre-made quizzes that you can go in and you can even clone them and make them your own.
So you have a canned quiz, but you can also make it your own?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cool.
And next up, we've got a lot to get through tonight, so Kim Geisting.
Mine's not as fun, but what I wanted to share with you a little bit was about some student research, when, myself included. When we were in high school and we were doing research papers, you had to have like a print source, you had to have a magazine source, newspaper source, those kinds of different sorts of things. Well, we still require different types of sources and we still have lots of print sources. But really, the world of magazines and newspapers has changed substantially in the last even 10 years that I've been in the media. And so now most of those magazines and newspaper sources are found online and they're found through things that are called databases. And I'm not mirroring. Let me try again. Oh, I found it. It's just not finding me. Okay, well, let's see. Oh, good. Very good. Okay, so what I wanted to do very briefly was talk about, there we go, student iPads and research, because we have research going on in all of our English classes. And I've been into all of the freshman English classes and a lot of the sophomore English classes and have talked to the other teachers about how the kids can do this. So what happens is, there we go, one of the places where we can access this information is from a database called Access My Library. And some of the databases that we get into are things that are provided by the state library, so we have access to them that way. And some of those are things that we purchase through the Media Center budget. And so, there we go. So there's 18 different databases that the students can get into. Everything from specific to science, specific to history, specific to wellness, specific to biographies, different kinds of databases. And the one that I showed up here is about science. So let's say that I'm working with a science class where students are doing some kind of a scientific research project. So they would go into the science database and they would choose their topic. So let's say for example, they chose Ebola, a current topic going on right now. Okay? So if you can see, and it's hard to see it on the screen here, but there's featured content, there's reference materials. And if we scroll down a little bit further, there's newspaper articles, magazine articles, professional academic journals, that would be peer reviewed stuff. There's also video and audio and all the students have to do is click on something to be able to see it or read it. So it's really nice. They can access full text, like a magazine article or a newspaper article, right on their iPad. So they just have to touch it and then they're able to read it. And when they read the article, and again, it's really small up on the screen, but when they read the article, for those students that need help, there is a listen option. So it will read to them, so they can use headphones and listen to the article being read to them. Another tool that has been very helpful this year, we have a couple of students that English is not their first language. In fact, some of our students have recently moved to the United States from Mexico. And there is a translate on here and it will translate it into Spanish to help them out as they're going through the transition between the two languages. There's also a dictionary, so they can look up words that they might not be familiar with. And then what we have the students do, because not all of our students have access to the Wi-Fi at home, so we have them email the article to themselves and open it up in another app and it's actually on the iPad. They can annotate it, they can take notes, they can write actually on the article, save it on the iPad, access it at home, work on what they want to work on without having to have Wi-Fi when they get to their house. So we're seeing a lot of students using a lot of different apps and using the iPad for more and more things and we're surely seeing it used in research. So if there's questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I did want to let you know, Mr. Judd is right. We've just seen this growth in the use of the iPads. Students do come to me for help if they're not quite making the technology work like they want. And I always ask them, "So how many of your teachers are using it?", that kind of thing. And we've gone from just a few in the beginning, as one would expect, to kids saying, "Most", you know, like, "They're making this work." But I just think it's really exciting to see the growth that has happened, not only with our students, but with our teachers, as they become more familiar with the technology. So just one way that we're using it.
I'm excited to see these databases. I miss that memo. And we have all these because my answer is to Google it. And the Google is so.
It's so wide and it's so, you don't know who wrote the Google articles, you don't know if it's.
And the one that comes up on top is just the one that's been selected the most, but it isn't Iranian.
The very, very top ones are ones that are paid to put there.
Right. Yeah, there's that advertising. So the database, that's great.
Yeah, we have access to quite a few databases through either our own purchases or the state. So they are an awesome source. And when kids go to college, that's how they get that kind of information.
For sure.
Thank you. And next up is Kim Duncan.
So, let me get out. Yeah. Okay, Con Academy is just one of the ways that we're using the iPads to extend our classroom in the mathematics realm. Con Academy, this is the online version. We tend to use that more because of access is easier. But there is also an app that they can have on the iPad and then when they get back to school, it will communicate and communicate the information. So they can actually work in the app and then have it communicate to the online version all the work that they did while they were offline. So it's really a nice way to extend the classroom. In this, each of my classes are loaded. The students entered a code, much like you did, in order to join the Kahoot, they joined the class. What I'm going to do is go into my profile and show you how this, what the student sees when they're working. They often have this screen come up. The one that they look at most frequently is the progress screen. What this does on the progress screen is it shows the skills that they work in. It tells you how long they've worked, how many questions they did, what level they're working at, if it needs work, they're struggling with it, they've practiced it or they've mastered it. It gives you that data regarding their level of understanding and mastery on the different skills. Like I said, I just, this is where I signed in as a student and have worked on some information. Once you're in there, you can also see when the students work and they can also see this, what days they worked. Move this little line, it'll show what day. This says March 6th, I worked for 12 minutes and I did four topics. And it shows the work that I did also over here. Then on March 9th, I worked for another eight minutes. I watched a video, the dark blue shows you that they watched a video for help or communication to understand what they wanted them to do on the problem. So it lets them see what dates they work, how long they work. Energy points are the points they earn for answering correctly and answering a certain number in a row. It just makes it a game-like atmosphere where they're competing with themselves to try to improve their knowledge. We also have the focus. This is an area where they can look or I can look with each student. It shows you each of the topics that they've worked on in the last, this one says seven days. You can adjust it and look for one day, two days, three days, 30 days, or for the whole time, what topics they worked on. You can drill in a little bit further. When I'm pushing on one of the colors, it'll tell you how long they worked on that skill, how many problems they did, and how many they did correct without a hint.
You also might want to go back into your regular home, like your coaches' home, and show them like the skill progress, like for a class, because there's no names. It'll just show what the skill progress is.
And so this is one thing that students are able to see, but a teacher can also see for each student. You can look at this for each of your students individually. You can also see information as a whole class. The center here shows videos they watch. Again, it tells you the videos that they watched for help, how long they watched them. Sometimes they want that video to count. Yes, I watched that video, but it was a five-minute video and you had it on for 37 seconds. You didn't watch the video. And so it gives them more accountability because we can see how long they actually did watch it. As far as counting their time on their activity, Con Academy is very stingy with the way it counts time and they have to actively engage every 45 seconds for it to count as time working. You can't just open the program and sit there. You have to actually interact every 45 seconds for it to count time. And on the video, for it to count video time and to get points for watching the video, you have to watch for at least 30-second intervals for it to count as video time. And so if I go back to, we'll go back to this. And each of my classes, like I said, each of the classes, and then if you push skill progress, I can look at the skill progress on a class. It's being a little bit slow. It's not going. It's already engaged. But in the classroom, the way I use it to extend the classroom is they do have a time requirement to work in Con Academy each week. Most of the classes have a 50-minute minimum. That's 10 minutes a day. We talked about how it breaks down. You can work 10 minutes a day. You can do all 50 on one day, but you have 50 minutes a week required outside of the, to work in Con Academy. There are times where I offer Con Academy time while we're there in the classroom, but there's also, they can work outside of the classroom. Still trying to get it to come up on the skill progress. What it allows us to do is to recommend specific topics that we notice that students are struggling with on the daily work in the classroom and then assign or recommend assignments or topics for them to work on that will help increase their understanding. The topics we recommend parallel the topics that we're working on in class. Or there are support skills that they've shown that they weren't quite secure with and we need to bolster it by going back maybe to previous course levels and pulling out a skill that needs to be supported and it allows us to do that. Usually during a three to four week block of time, my students have six to eight assigned topics where they've been recommended and they have to complete those topics within the three to four week period as a homework assignment. They have to move it from the needed practice section and they can see that to the practice area. And that's what's not coming up here for us to be able to show you. And that's what's not coming up here for us to be able to show you.
Also, in that list of skill progress, it will like list the individual skills for the student in the different topics of math, and it really covers anything. It goes all the way up to pre-calc and calc. So it really is a resource for everybody, not just Algebra I or the lower-level classes. It really does go, it actually goes up to college-level classes as well.
I use it with my college trigonometry class also, and it's really supported their understanding of the skills.
And it's free.
Yes. And it's free forever, for everyone.
Yes.
That's the problem.
We even give them the name. But in a specific skill, it will give us the class, kind of where the class is at, so you can get a snapshot, instantaneous snapshot.
Of an entire class.
Who has mastered the concept, who is practicing the concept, who is struggling with the concept. So oftentimes, we can take that red zone struggling, and we can target those kids. I actually pull a small group or one-to-one and sit down with those kids individually to really target exactly what the issue is, and it's just instantaneous. So I can see that there are three kids that are struggling with this one concept. I pull them to the table, say, "Okay, let's go over this." And again, just a really good way to target intervention.
Here's a snapshot of a particular class where it shows the skills. The gray area is students that need to practice it still and need to work. The blue, lighter blue, they've practiced it, and they've shown some mastery. The dark blue shows that they've not only done five problems in a row correct, but they then did a challenge mastery test that showed that they mastered that skill. And it takes the concepts, as I said, it parallels those that we're doing in class. We have been working on right triangles and trigonometry. You can see topics that give difficulty, then you can go specifically. And if I push on it, it will actually show the names of the students that I need to address with. As a teacher, that gives you a huge amount of information. The success story of this, of all of it, I had a particular student that had a very difficult time interacting one-on-one. He was a struggling student, and even avoided class. But once we started using Khan Academy, and he interacted through the iPad, he's changed completely around, and he's found success. He feels happy. It's just been a whole demeanor change in even just one particular student. I can tell you, I've seen it in others too. But the use of the technology has opened up worlds for some of the students that felt frustrated before.
And again, it's free.
It's free.
Always liked free.
So, Mr. Tyler.
I'm gonna talk for just a moment, then I have a couple of students that I'm gonna demonstrate to some of this. Hopefully, this will be right up really fast. First of all, the iPads in my classroom, the advent of the iPad has been the greatest thing since sliced bread, to use an old, worn-out phrase. Just imagine going back in the choir classroom just a few years ago, and every rehearsal tape we made was on cassette tapes. Remember those? Well, when you made one master, you'd have a machine, and it'd do four at a time, the really noisy machines, remember those? Well, and then after you get those in the students' hands, they'd have to have a tape player to play with if it didn't eat up the tape first. And then things got better. We eventually had CDs, but still, I've been using them for years. If they'd get out of the classroom and make it home without getting all scratched up, and then with burnt CDs, you've gotta find a CD player that will actually make one of those work. So, and then assessment, talking about a nightmare, assessment with the tape players, we used to do it. Have students go back and record themselves, and then it's my job to go home and find them, find that tape. And again, even last year, I used a digital recorder. And still, you've got, still, they've gotta record it at school, and then you have to find them. And then you get students that say, "Oh, Mr. Tyler, I made ten recordings, I only want you to listen to the last one." So anyway, this, just before I have these girls talk a little bit, this program, when I was introduced to Showbee, this is an example of a file that I've sent on Zion's walls. And you can see, there are several files here, and you can see the second one up from the bottom is the bass baritone part. And then you'll hear the piano part, and then eventually, just a little bit, you'll hear a louder version of the bass. Introduction's almost over. And that's, there's the bass part. So this is the first process, is the students have all these files, they can go to, and then a description of it, if they have a problem with it, they can send me a message. And then we've got a lot of other, the coolest part though is, and you can see, when I bring up this class, this is fifth-period class, and I can bring up fifth-period, and I get all of these different files, and I'm gonna bring up the one that the girls are gonna talk about. And here's all my students. So I not only have to, I don't have to rumble through a tape, I've got a running record of this student all year long. They can send me a file, and then, I'm gonna not steal their thunder, because I've asked them to come. I've asked two girls that are kind of the top of my class, they're great students, they do the work, I know they're excited about it because they submit files. And I've asked Abby Redman to speak first. She's gonna kind of tell you how this works for her, and play a little sample of something she's tested on recently, and you'll see kind of my response and her response back.
Okay. As a student at CHS High School, I use my iPad in choir. We have to send in recordings whenever we're going over like new songs and everything. And so, I would send him a voice note of the song we're working on and preparing, and he would respond to me with feedback and critique of...
Wait a minute.
My voice. Of course I will. (singing) That's big cottages, shoes and clothes, hot phones and singe suits and what they need, arching wings, birds, boots of crimson leather. Bunches set with bros and gems, caps with eager feather. What they need, arching wings, birds, boots of crimson leather. Bunches set with bros and gems, caps with eager feather. That be fit a magar. All ready? So, as you can see, I have put in my recording, and he has gave me some feedback, and then I then responded to him, and we have communication through Showbee, so I can better myself in choir.
Okay. You're not gonna hear me sing, sorry.
This is Sarah.
I'm gonna show you guys, there's something really cool we've been able to do this year. One of our contest pieces is a Japanese piece, and it's called Hotari Kor. And is it in shared folder? Oh, no. Well, it's a Japanese piece, and as a lot of you probably know, we have a native Japanese teacher, Ms. Kawakubo, and she's been kind enough to help us out with the pronunciations of the entire piece. And Showbee was really useful, and her recording it, and us being able to play it at home, and sending it in to us just through the... Which one?
The top one.
Top one. And this is just kind of her. And, yeah.
Ho, ho. Hotaru koi. Achi no mizu wa nigaizou. Kochi no mizu wa amaiizou. Ho, ho. Hotaru koi. Ho, ho.
Yeah. But that was a little bit of her pronouncing it, and I think it goes through the whole song. And yeah, it's been really, really helpful, because none of us in choir are actually native Japanese speakers. So it was kind of a mishmash of us trying to sound it out before she came along and helped us out through the whole Showbee process, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And I did have to ask Kawakubo permission to play her tonight. Interesting story that happened in class. Underneath this is another pronunciation from a university from somewhere. And she listened to about 30 seconds of it and said, "No, no, that's not it."
Well, I teach French. And for a language, we also use the iPads like almost all the time. I use it all the time. And one of the things that I use it for is for speaking assignments. The kids get frustrated, nervous, et cetera, et cetera, speaking in front of me, speaking in front of the class. So what I do is I give them an assignment, I put it on Showbee, so they can read the directions. This kid even made some notes there about what he had to do. And then they record it. I give them about a week to do it, so they have plenty of time. They record it. If it is wrong or something like that, I still have time to tell them to do it again. Let's see if you can hear this. So he had to, they had to say some sentences about chores that they had to do. It is necessary that I wash the car, or water the plants, things like that. So depending on the class that we are taking, they need to do that. Another, wow, that's... Another thing that my students do is they make videos. And there should be a video there, but it's not. So it's going to be here. Well, in this one, they had to create a song. They were working in groups, and then they had to record it. I told them, "It's not about how well you can sing. I can't sing myself, so I'm not going to grade you on that. That would be Mr. Tiger." They had some things that they had to cover in their song. So let's see when this finishes.
And while it's loading, these are all free recording apps or...
Yes. This was made with iMovie, I think, and then they had to put it in their camera roll, and then they can submit it here. And same thing, they have plenty of time to work on it, they can get... Oh, there it is. I promise there's a song there. So what they were doing here, we were studying food and how to order at a restaurant, so they had to create a scenario like that and make a song about food and beverages. And another thing that I do with them using the iPad is, same as Kahoot can be used for the teacher to create the assignment for the students, well, I do it the other way around. They create the Kahoots, and that is my account, and then they share them with me, and we play them in class. So they also get to see if the others make any mistakes, and I also see the way that they think about creating questions. And with my French 3 students, I am using this webpage called ePulse that can be used in any laptop, but why a laptop if they have iPads now? I found a school in France, and now they are exchanging emails. And this is one of my students that is sending his email to this kid in France, and I flag all the, I can control everything that comes in and goes out. So this is telling me that I didn't read it yet. So as long as I don't read the email that he's sending, the email won't go. Same thing when they get emails. I can read everything that they receive, I can see every picture, and that's how I can make sure that there's nothing dangerous that is going to arrive to them. Whoops. The last thing that I have is this new app and webpage that we found, it's called Duolingo, and it's similar to Khan Academy, but for a foreign language. We can only use it in Spanish and French, not for Japanese. But what I did was, with help from Ms. Long, I created the classes, and then the kids joined today. Today was the first time that we did it, and there I can see what skills they were working on, how many lessons they worked on, how many experience points they got in that lesson, and the total they have. I also gave them a number that they have to complete per week, and some of them were really excited. I only found like two or three that didn't like it at all, it was a lot of work, et cetera, et cetera. And that's what I have. Oh, well, and in this one, they all were, all four competencies of a foreign language. They need to type, they need to read, they need to listen to, they need to speak, so they also...
That's Judith John Omedina, our French teacher. We have two more presentations. I appreciate your patience, but I had to turn people down who wanted to show stuff. That's how excited our teachers are about what's going on, and our students, I turned students down who yesterday said, "Hey, we want to present." It's, well, we've already got a program, it's already probably too long. So, Kelsey, are you up?
Yeah.
This is Kelsey Brown, one of our Spanish teachers.
All right, hi. I'm not used to presenting in English very much. I try to do all Spanish with my students, so it'll be interesting. All right, so I'm gonna talk about the app Showbee. You've seen it, a couple from other teachers have brought it up a little. As you can see with just in our presentations, a lot of us use this app for different reasons. The main purpose is to be able to have all your students in their classes, so you set up their classes. They put in a code, join the class, and then it gives a list of all the different assignments that I've assigned to each class. And so, if I were to click on Spanish 3, it would give me that list of assignments, whether it's assigned or whether it has been collected, either way. Then once you go into a specific assignment, you can go through, and there's a list, this is where student names would be, I just took them out, just so you couldn't see if kids aren't turning work in. But, and so, the little Post-it note shows that they submitted something, the little red circle shows that I've graded it, so I can keep track of what I've graded, what I haven't, who's turned it in, who hasn't. It also, and this is probably one of my favorite things, it tells me when work is late. I'm really bad, I have a trace system, so if they like snuck something in, I wouldn't notice if it was late or not. But with Showbee, it tells me straight out whether they turned it in, one minute late, 20 minutes late, three days late. It tells me what time they turned it in. In the app, I can then go and grade as well. They can work in the app or outside the app and upload to it, but I can grade, and then that gives them instant feedback. Another thing that I'll admit, I'm kind of bad as a teacher, is getting things passed back in a timely fashion. I get them graded fine, but then getting them passed back is tough sometimes, because I forget about it, and then the bell rings. So in this way, the students can just see exactly what, how their grade was, they can see where I marked on it. It's an instant feedback for them. As you saw earlier, you can submit videos, voice recordings, which is nice. Before this app, I had them giving it to me, and then it would bog down my iPad or bog down a flash drive. And so now, it can be saved in here, I can keep going back to it and looking at it, but it doesn't take up room on my iPad. You also saw the student-teacher communication, you can write notes back and forth, comments. You can, I know some teachers, I've done this once, but you can submit it, a teacher can like mark it, and then they can resubmit it, try again, keep submitting until it's perfect. And it can keep going in the same assignment, so you can see it just marked again and again of students entering their assignment. I also personally use it to push out different documents to students. It's not always things they have to turn back in to me, so like notes, I'll set up a format for them, and then they just have to download it, and they can write notes in their iPads. Or policy changes, like I changed my quiz retake policy. So I typed it all out, and instead of printing it off and giving it to them, where they lose the paper, I find it on the floor. It is not on their iPads forever. It's stuck. They can't get rid of it. So they can't give me the excuse, "Oh, you never gave me that." So it's there for them. Absent students, you can put in your notes, things that you talked about in class, they can write comments to ask questions. It just limits the makeup work they're gonna have to do later. I did this recently, first student was in I.I. for more, for a few days, so I didn't have to keep printing things off for her, I could just tell them it's in her iPad. And then the last thing, and this is one of my favorite qualities as well, work is never deleted, it's archived. And so if, for example, a kid wants to turn in something they should have turned in four weeks ago, I can go back, I can unarchive it, and then they can go and turn it in. And so work is never lost necessarily. It gets put away, so it doesn't bog down everything, but I can always bring it back, which is nice. So, and that's really all I have for you. If there's any questions, if not, it is Andrew Sutter. Yeah, bye.
I was just at a conference a couple weeks ago, and I was talking to some of the teachers over there, and they said that next year, their entire school is going to go to no textbooks, and they're just doing it in one year. And... And we are, this year, adopting, we adopted English textbooks, one time. And we're going through that process. I think that's actually in some ways a better process because we're going to be learning from what we've done in class, and then we're going to be seeing how that works in social studies this year. And that's actually a better way than, and the teachers that I was talking to, they are scared to death because they're saying, we're going to be going that quickly, and we don't know what's going to happen. And so I'm going to quickly go through and show you some examples of what we're using the English textbooks for. I'm focusing today just on the close reading aspect because there's a lot to it, and I don't want to overwhelm you, and we've already gone. So very quickly, this, I've done a few screenshots just to show you what this looks like for students and for, and for me as a teacher. They would log on. They see this dashboard. It gives them access to notebook, their ebook. And that's what I want to show you perfectly first is the student ebook. So they click on the yellow button, and the next screen that they would see would be something like this. And if you look on the left-hand side, it gives them several things they can go to. Bookmarks, if you can tell them bookmark a certain page, they can bookmark a certain page. They can put notes in. They can also highlight. But what I want to point out again, as I'm looking at close reading, if you look at the left-hand side and it says close reading, it has a little green icon. What that is, is a model. And what will happen is if a student is reading this particular story, which is called Read This Bargain. It's about, this one is about Kip L.A. It's a one about schools and how Kip L.A. runs their school. You click that, and two people come up, and they read this text, and then they discuss it. So what they, what the students are seeing then is how to discuss text. And they're hearing two people who have an intelligent conversation about the text. And so this is the first time, what I did, this is actually, I used it at the very end of last semester. And so I had my students reading this text. They read through this. They listened to these particular close reads, or these close read conversations. And of course, we then discussed it in class as well. Then we went to a next one. That was kind of our anchor text. Then we went to the next reading, and here, the students read a text. And then they answered questions as they're reading the text. So in this case, about, I think, a page and a half in, they come to this question right here. It says, reread lines five through 12. Why do you think Kiwanis is disappointed that the other African-American girl sat in the back? And then it has them answer the question. If you look at the green icon on the left, they click on that, and a text box appeared, text box appears, and then they can type their answers there. And then as a teacher, I can go in and see how they responded. That is the textbook. That is the online textbook part of it. Now, that is not the only thing that they have. So I want to show you the next thing that they, which we really like. The reason why we chose this particular textbook is because the other textbooks that we saw were still relying heavily on literature. And in the Common Core and in the Indiana State Standards, both of them are heavily, are much more focused on nonfiction texts. And so if you look, if you saw those two pieces, those are both nonfiction texts. And nonfiction texts are great, but they often will go out of date quickly. And so what our textbook company has done is they have created what's called an FYI site. If you look on the right-hand side, the purple icon there, a student would click there. I would point them to this one. Now, this one does not have, this one does not have questions or anything like that. This would be just, this would be saying, I would be telling the student, hey, we're going to be talking about this text in relationship to what we've talked about already. And so we actually, in this case, there's three of here. I have one about Finnish Education Chief, The Key to Success, which is actually a video they can watch from TED, TED Talk. And the last one is CEO Tells Grad. The nice one about Finnish Education Chief is, I'll show you what that looks like here. They click on it. This is actually from The Atlantic. This was published last, last March in 2014, so it's fairly new. And what's interesting about this particular article is it is the counterargument to the current, the other two that we saw in our textbook. There, it's not the exact same argument that those two are making. And so we can discuss in class how that one, this particular perspective is different than perhaps Kip L.A. or the Grit piece that we looked at earlier. So that is a quick look at our textbook. One more thing before I finish, I want to point something that we have been looking at lately, and that's vocabulary.com. I have sent this to Dr. Riki, and we have, some of our teachers are using this. This is something that, I'm not going to spend very much time on it, but allows us, one of our weak points, particularly in SATs, is vocabulary. And this is going to be a possible way for our students to increase their vocabulary. It's kind of like a con. It actually creates kind of like a game. It finds exactly where a student is in their vocabulary, and then it begins to adapt the program to them. And as a teacher, I can also create vocabulary lists from literature and from texts that I have and give them to it. And they can, it will actually introduce those words, and they have to master them. Takes you a while, but it'll find exactly what kind of vocabulary you need to work on, and it will test you on that. It challenges me. So, and I have my eight-year-old son working on this, and it challenges him. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Aaron.
Okay, thank you for your patience. That's the tip of the iceberg. And there's so many things we'd like to show you, but you need to go to bed this evening at some point. So if you want to come to the school and see more, please feel free to come in anytime. I'll take you to classes where we have a good shot of seeing something going on, or I'll just let you roam, and you'll see it happening on your own. So thank you for having us, and you'll come back anytime you want.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Judd. Thank you, teacher, students, everyone that participated. We appreciate your being here and certainly informative. Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Spurlock, make the motion. Do I hear a second? Motion, Mr. Hilton has been second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Are there any patron comments on the agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda contains approval of minutes from our regular business meeting of February 10, 15, and executive meeting of February 10 of 2015. The personnel report, which contained retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, et cetera. Approval of February 2015 claims number 38321 through number 38612. Also, we have a request from WTCC for payment in full after delivery to ANV Water Jet Tech for a large piece of equipment. And we have the acceptance of a donation of $500, $500 grant from the Whitewater R E M C for Eastview Elementary School. A grant donation from Henry County R E M C of $1,000 for Fayette Central Elementary. A donation of $13,880 from the Insurance Trust for the FCS, FCSC Wellness Committee. And a donation of $1,000 from Sam's Watch for C H S's S A D D and drug testing programs. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda? Mr. Hilton?
I move to accept the consent.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Now moving into the action items, a personnel report. Dr. Bayer?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett, Dr. Hodges, members of the board. Two persons for your consideration this evening. One, and these are both support staff members, Amy Burris, Head Start Education Assistant, Eastview, effective March 2, 2015, and Tammy Matthews for guidance support at Fayette Central, effective February 9, 2015, through April 27, 2015. Those persons for your consideration this evening. Mr. Burchett.
Thank you, Dr. Bayer. You have heard his report. What is your... What, do I hear a motion to accept his recommendations? I'll get that out right in a minute.
I move to accept this recommendation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Kerschner. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Now we have the approval of the 2015-16 school calendar. Dr. Hodges?
Board, last time we presented this as a discussion item. Since then, we've not made any changes to that. Just for information's sake, teachers would report back on August 3. First day for students would be August 5. The last day on this calendar for students would be May 18. And last day for teachers would be May 19, assuming we only miss two days next year. It pretty much is a corresponding calendar to this year, so... Since we've had no conversation or no questions about that, I'd recommend that you approve the calendar as submitted this evening.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the 2015-16 school calendar?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Hilton?
I move to approve the calendar.
All right, thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Savoy? Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Next is the approval of the Head Start Grant Budget Self-Assessment Goals and Community Assessment. Dr. Riki?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Board, I will turn it over to Lori Boggs, and she will go through her memos.
Thank you again for hearing about Head Start and what we need to do to get our grant sent off to Chicago pretty quickly here. I'm just going to kind of run through those items on your agenda. The first step in our annual goal writing is to complete a self-assessment. So we changed that around a little bit this year. We started earlier. And we tried to involve more people. We tried to branch out a little bit with that self-assessment and look at some different areas and ask different questions because if you're always using the same tool and always using the same questions, you always get the same results. So we wanted, we wanted to really look at our program in depth, especially since we're having federal reviews one right after another appears this year. So we kind of changed things around a little bit. We started earlier. We tried to involve a lot of different people. Head Start, we're federally mandated to complete that program self-assessment every year. And that reason behind that is to make sure that we're using, we're continually looking at our program for improvement. We have to involve a lot of people in that. We need parents. We need community members. We need staff to look at our program, and we look at the program from all aspects. We look at how we enroll children. We look at our family partnerships, fiscal and management. We look at those procedures. We look at education and what goes on in our classrooms, as well as including disabled students into our program, health and nutrition and facilities. So we have to look at a lot of different areas. And we do that by having the people who are on our self-assessment committee do some personal observations. We have some community members who actually rode school buses for us this year. That was an interesting little trip for them. Got some interesting comments back from that. But we have them observe classrooms, and of course, any government program generates a lot of policies and procedures and a lot of paper. So we had a lot of documents that we had people look through in order to complete our self-assessment. And once that was completed, the committee got together, and we pulled all that together and came up with some program strengths, and they're very similar to what we found in the past. We do feel like our grantee, Fayette County Schools, benefits our program greatly. The facilities that we are able to use, the classrooms, the school buildings, can't be beat as far as Head Start programs. The reporting systems we have in place, not only for child outcomes, but also just to record all of the health and nutrition things that we have to record on every child, they work well for our program. We do have a highly qualified staff, and we also have strong community partnerships. In Fayette County, with everybody struggling with tightened budgets, we still do have really strong community partnerships. People that we could call at a moment's notice, and they'll, they'll step up and help us, so that we do feel like those are strengths. Areas that we know we need to continue to focus improvement on are just parenting skills. Working with the parents of children in our program to improve those parenting skills is, is still a big concern and a big push for our program. Low school readiness and social emotional skills, we've talked about that before. We have children who are coming into our program with less and less skills. Does make it tough to get the year started because you're working for two to three months to just get those in place before you can start in with any cognitive learning. So it does make it a little bit harder to get that going, and we know that that is an improvement area. We have to get better at that. Family partnerships always. We have to work with those parents to have success with their children, and that's, that's something we always work on, but we know that that is also an area that we have to continue to focus on. And then just staff training to be able to do all of that and follow-up referrals. We need to give our parents lots of referrals to places in our community that can also... We just need, it takes a village not only to raise a child, but a village to help families who are struggling. So we need to get better at making those referrals and working with those agencies, even though we have strong partnerships. So that's what our self-assessment found. And from that self-assessment, then what we do is plug that into long and short-term goals. And again, we're one of the few counties in, few counties in Indiana that have a five-year Head Start grant, which means that we won't have to recompete our grant. We're in year two, and so we won't have to recompete that grant till year five. So the goal sheets that I sent the board members, the long-term goals are things that we want to accomplish over the five years of the grant period. The short-term goals are things that we really want to work on and accomplish in a shorter period of time, hopefully, within a year. But we know we need to just strengthen that annual planning. We have to get better at planning our program in order for our children to be successful. And we do need to improve our parent, family, and community engagement plan. Again, we want parents to come in. They have to come in, and they have to buy in and be the best supporters they can for their children's school success. School readiness is a big push in our program, but it, we need to focus more on that and, and get better at it, quite honestly. We, we just have children who are facing too many obstacles when they come to school to even sit and learn. So we, that's something we absolutely want to work on. And then the third short-term goal was just that we want to continue to provide a lot of opportunities for parents and community members to get involved in our program. That's kind of a twofold goal because we want to get people involved because, again, we need to support these parents to show them the importance of their children. You get one chance at a child, and you need to make every moment count with that child. But also, we just, we need to increase our in-kind, and that's our non-federal share match. Last year, we asked for a waiver of about $14,000. And this year, right at this particular time, we're looking at a shortfall of about $15,000. And what we're doing is we put two programs in place to try to increase that. We've got an in-place plan, but we also are possibly going to be asking for a waiver again of some in-kind. So that's kind of a twofold goal. We, we want to get parents and community involved, but we also need that involvement for our program. Then just again, partner with local agencies to assist families as needed, improve the quality of services to families in need of assistance, especially when it comes to health and nutrition. It's really important for children to be healthy and, and to have the food they need to be ready to learn. And then lastly, just, we want to continue to work with staff and work with parent and provide training so that we can get children socially, emotionally ready, increase their executive function skills so they can control themselves, have some control over themselves when they come into the classroom so they can be ready to learn. So those are the skills, those are the short-term goals that we kind of developed from our social, our self-assessment. We also completed a community assessment, and we have to do, pick one of those every three years, and then two years you just do an update. But basically, the update was pretty much the same, that we know, again, we are a community in need of a lot of services, and we are a community, we found that pulls together, but, but we continue to need to do that. Again, we're one of the poorest counties. We are the poorest county in the state. We have a poverty rate of 23%. Unemployment is always among the highest in the states, and we still are, are losing people in our community. Again, one of the issues that came up from that community assessment too was just the absence of a program for children who are birth to three years of age. They can come into Head Start at three. They can come into most preschools at three. But from birth to three, there really is an absence of a program in our community for those children. And again, with, when families are struggling, they need that support. So that's something that we, we as a program are looking at. How can that gap be bridged? And I've had a couple of community members as well come and want to talk about that. What can we do to provide something for those children who are even younger? So that's something we're going to work on as a community. So with all of that input, then what we have to do with that information is take it and put it into our budget for next year. So our, our grant is due April 1, and I always say April Fool's Day is a pretty good day for that to go in. But we can apply for $1,083,919. And that's just like a base grant to run our program, but we can, we also get an additional $18,937. And that is earmarked specifically for training for staff and training for parents. So that, that money has to be used for that purpose. It can't be used for running your program or paying salaries or anything like that. Again, then with that money, we are required to provide back to them $275,714. Again, then with that money, we are required to provide back to them $275,714 in in-kind. And in-kind is just like a community contribution. When somebody does something for our program, that volunteerism is a big part of that, and then just any kind of community support. And I think always, my favorite example of that is, in our community, our children are required to have a dental exam every year, and any follow-up that they need. They're required to have a vision exam every year and any follow-up they need. And most other Head Starts pay for those services. In our community, the dentists and the eye doctors provide those every year for our kids. And they really provide them at the beginning of the year, but they provide follow-up all year long, because we have kids coming in at different points of the year. So that gives our program usually right around $15,000 worth of in-kind. And again, I think that's my favorite example, because that doesn't happen every place else. That happens in Fayette County. So we're really proud of that. We are funded for 162 kids, so we're done with sequestration and we're back up to our full enrollment. We do have six classrooms, and we are using the center-based program with double-half-day sessions. That's a given. And we also partner with CF Special Services and serve an additional 15 to 30 kids in our classrooms who have special needs. So they are also part of our classrooms. As far as our budget, we gave you the simplified version, not the huge budget that even I don't like to look at most days. But for personnel for next school year, we set aside $678,264. For fringe benefits, it's about $268,000, and that makes up about 84 percent of our budget. So again, like everybody else's budget, that's the big cost. We do have training for about $18,937, and then supplies, $24,000, a little more. And other includes almost anything that's not in those categories. So again, we pay for transportation, we pay for playground maintenance, we pay for our health screenings of our staff and some of our children as well. We pay for mental health services for children, nutrition services, and then our tracking system. So that makes up a lot of that other category, and that comes in right around at 10 percent of our budget, or $113,000, by $113,000. It's a tight budget some days, but I do think... I am proud of the quality of our program, and I am proud that our staff manages to... They do a good job. And I think in our federal reviews, we're having our second one this week, and they are observing classrooms. We've been complimented several times just on our materials and our facilities and our classrooms. And again, we couldn't have that if it wasn't for the school corporation. So we surely appreciate what we get from the school corporation and the support. So any questions that I can answer?
Did we have a zero-to-three-year program? Was there an early steps program that kind of filled in some of the blanks? Has that been discontinued?
We had an Even Start program.
Even Start, I'm sorry.
Yeah, years ago. And it was a literacy-based program. And it was funded through the Department of Ed. And in Indiana, I think they had 11 Even Start programs, and they cut, I believe, eight of those. And they ended up with three, and those were all in bigger cities, not rural communities. We still have a First Steps program that serves birth to three, but it's in a home-based center, and you do have to meet certain requirements.
Certain criteria, okay.
Yes, yes.
So you have the evaluator here. Is that going well for you?
We think so. The evaluation... Yes, we think so. The evaluation system has changed. Instead of one week-long, two-thang... It's five-week-long two-thangs, as I recall. But they've changed their system. You don't get feedback onsite. The evaluator really is there for that. They don't give us input, and we're not allowed to ask them questions. That's just part of the new system. And then they will take that back and send their information into Washington. And then they say within, they hope, one to three months, we'll get a written report back from that particular evaluation.
Lori, you said you got your hours back from the Sequest station, is that...
We got our... We were cut. Yeah, so it wasn't really hours. It was a budget cut.
Budget cut.
And then we also cut enrollment to 154 children last year. So we were one of the, I think, I don't know if you want to call it smart, but lucky communities... Some communities slashed their enrollment by as much as half. We cut our 16 children, because we thought that we needed to serve children. So we are back up to our original funding. I think the funding that we were cut was about, I want to say, right around $63,000. But we are back up to our original funding and our original enrollment of 162 funded.
So that went right to the children? It wasn't salaries or anything? That money, the cuts, had to be right?
We did... We actually... We had a teacher who resigned during the year of sequestration. We didn't hire her back. We put it back into the program. We went from one full-day classroom at Eastview, though, to two half-day sessions, and that's where we could put the additional 16 kids that we brought back in.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Boggs.
Thank you. And I want to just thank Mr. Burchett. He was kind of put on the spot yesterday. Our regional officer is also in town this week, and she kind of said that she would like to meet with the president of the school board and the president of Policy Council tomorrow, which was today. And he very graciously stepped up to come and have lunch with us and speak with her, so I appreciate that, Mr. Burchett.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay. We need to have a motion to approve the Head Start Grant Budget Self-Assessment and Goals and Community Assessment.
Mr. President, I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Savoy. Do I hear...
I'll second that.
Mr. Hunt. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Next is the approval of the FCSC Board Protocol. Dr. Hodges.
Board, last board meeting, we agreed to form a committee to go back and revisit the board protocol, and that's been done. We have a recommendation. I don't know if one of the committee wanted to speak to that. We basically made two changes to the protocol. Describe that in background, but what you have in your packet, the first bullet item there, where it says the board will represent the needs and interests of all children in Fayette County School Corporation, used to be the last bullet. It was set as a summary statement. The committee felt that that ought to be where we start. That's the most important thing. So that's what we did. And then if you have your protocol, if you go the fourth bullet from the bottom, where it talks about conduct at a board meeting, and it talks about while we encourage debate in differing points of view, the words "we will do so in a professional manner" were added. Other than that, the protocol is as it was presented to you last time. Know if any one of the committee wants to speak to that? But if not...
I still have some issues with it. I would like to see... I completely agree with it in theory. My issue has been the practice of it, and I really need to see how it works from a board perspective as opposed to from an outsider's perspective. And I have not had that opportunity to do that. So although theoretically, I agree how this works, the perception that I've had that how it works is not as the theory has implied, and I need, for my own purposes, to see that, to see how it works and how it works effectively. Because my perception had been, that it has been previously, that it's not worked as I think the theory implies that it ought. So I still have some reservations. I still have some reservations about that. But again, those are my reservations, and I respect what we're trying to do here, that we do need to be on the same page. But I also think that we have to act in our good conscience also. I think we made some good changes, but I'm a very pragmatic person. I have to see how it works in practice. Theory is great. Practice can sometimes be quite another situation. So I'm anxious to see how it works in practice.
You'll have your chance.
I will have my chance, that's right.
And that was discussion that we had at the committee level, and I think that's one of the reasons this is on paper and not in stone. You know, we can revisit this on an annual basis and see what changes we need to make from that. But if someone on the committee wants to correct this statement, it was the unanimous recommendation the committee that we bring it to you for your approval this evening.
Just another question. As far as purpose-wise, I guess, what... I mean, is this something that... Have we done this two years ago or every year?
I'd have to go back and check the date of the one that's hanging on the wall back there. But it was something that was through a board retreat. It was a recommendation that we look at something like this. At the time that we did the first one, I was feeling that some members of the board that we have set some pretty high accountability standards for just about every position that we have. In the school corporation, the board felt it was important that they set some expectations and goals for themselves. And so that's really kind of the genesis of this. There were some different meetings that folks went to, and they heard it from multiple sources, that this was a good practice, and it was something that we desired to do here.
In fairness, Ron was not at the last meeting when we had this discussion.
I apologize, as far as the packet goes, I've been gone for four weeks, three and a half weeks, so I haven't been able to... That's the reason I was asking. I haven't had a chance to look at it.
I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Hunt, Mr. Hilton, Ms. Kirchner, for serving on that committee and bringing this to the board. So with that being said, do I hear a motion to approve the board's protocol?
Mr. President, I still move.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hunt. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Next on the agenda for action items is permission to advertise for the 2015 summer projects. Ms. Holland?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. As you may recall, annually, I bring a list of the projects that we need to gather quotes and/or bids for, for our summer projects. This is that list, including a Fraser tiller replacement. This will mirror the project that was completed at Maplewood last summer. A small tiller replacement at Fayette Central. I believe this is the third or the fourth unit of replacing the small rooftop chillers that they have out there. We will continue that replacement program. There is some boiler duct work that needs to be completed at the middle school. We have our annual asphalt ceiling for the parking lots and some walkways at the Career Center, the high school, Everton and Maplewood. As you recall, we are working with Schmidt and Associates for replacement of the Spartan Bowl floor, Everton's roof. The balance of the plumbing at Connersville High School would be in the Waterloo section of the building. It will not require the building to be closed this year. They'll just be able to turn water off in that area, and we don't need to utilize any of the classrooms there. Additionally, Schmidt is helping us design a potential vestibule for the high school. They have given us some guidance on the air handling system at the Career Center. They have not charged us anything for that advice, so we are going out and taking proposals for that replacement. That's been a struggle for the last couple of years at the Career Center. Additionally, we have, at the high school, concrete steps and curb replacement over in the area where you access the swimming pool and then that back parking lot there. It is broken down into sections, so we will do what we think we can afford to do, depending on where the bids. Additionally, the item that's still in limbo is the tennis court replacement at the high school. We're not sure if that will be our project or not. We will... I am seeking permission now to advertise if we do decide that is our most important athletic capital projects investment for this year. That way, we can be ahead of the game and get that ad in the paper instead of waiting for the next board meeting for approval. So again, I want to point out, this is only advertising for the quotes and/or bids, and any recommendation will be brought to you for final approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Hunt?
Go ahead.
Is the Ford or Spartan Bowl, is it a doable thing?
Well, we certainly hope so. That's our plan. They are working on specifications right now. We've had to make some modifications with them in that we have found that there is some tile that has collapsed under the floor. So in addition to the floor, it will include replacement of the drainage tile that's under the floor. So they'll be removing the floor, the concrete slab, replacing the drainage tile, and then putting all of that back.
Is that where our water problem came from?
I don't think we'll know that until we can take up a section of the floor and look at it. They've done some drilling, some core sampling there. You know, it has coincided with activities of the city and the area when we've had the water problems, but it's difficult to determine that from the surface.
So what's the plans of the floor? What are they redoing the floor, replacing the whole thing?
Yeah, from...
From the gravel up?
Yeah.
So what are they going to do with the old floor?
Well, no decision's been made. I mean, there had been when we first started talking about this three, four years ago, you know, could it be broken up and sold as a fundraiser of some sort? Is it, you know...
Could you give the state championships or some other...
There's timelines to consider also.
Mr. Duncan will probably do it himself.
Thank you for volunteering him. I was like, well, thank you.
He's kind of saw a hole.
One of the things that, when we talked about doing some different things on top of the slab, I didn't realize until we were looking at some of the drawings, we really had one option as to how to put that floor on. And if you replace basketball floors, you know, there's several different options for how the floor responds and reflects, and they gave us some technical name of how that works. We really just had one option. Since we're going to be replacing the drainage tile, the concrete and everything else, we have more options as to what kind of floor we're going to put in. And I think they're scheduled to go to Chicago and manufacture...
March 30. March 30.
And bounce the ball off the floor and see which one they like the best, and they'll go from there.
If you ever want to make one more.
Is that pretty accurate?
I'm going to try dunking some. Yeah, that's the plan about March 30 right now myself. Mr. Russell will go with the basketball coaches to venture in my car.
Is he going to dunk it?
Off my back.
Yeah, you're kidding.
And then we're hoping they were going to charter us a plane and fly it. I think that flew out the window, so I think I'm not going to have a deal. But according to that, March 3 is the tentative plan.
There won't be any summer camps at Spartan Bowl. They're working to make other facilities available for any of those summer camps. It's unlikely that the project will be completed by the start of school, very unlikely. So we have spoken with Mrs. Denham about making other arrangements for PE during the first part of the year, you know. Luckily, it's nice outside, and I think they go to Claypool anyhow for some of their activities, so...
We've talked to them in terms of they'll be able to have the floor Monday after graduation, and the drop-dead critical date is the opening night for girls' basketball. Putting in a new floor, putting in new concrete will increase the timeline just a little bit, because the concrete has to cure, but we were given assurances that that shouldn't be a problem.
Once we dig underneath and find what's going on, is... We did not have water problems until they started tearing up 20th Street and Grand Avenue and the like. And if we find, when we dig under there, that there's... Do we have some options with the city? If we find evidence that their intrusions upon their particular water-getting-rid-of-system has been the cause of our problem because of a backup or extension? Because we did not have that kind of thing until the city started tearing up Grand and 20th Street, which seems to be perpetual. So, you know, is there going to be... Is there any way we can show... to be perpetual. So, you know, is there going to be... Is there any way we can show some, perhaps some liability on their part for contributing to this?
Here's what I'll say. This most recent issue that we had this fall, the cooperation we've received from the water department, from City Hall, has been very good. They have... We're still sharing some information back and forth as to the flushing of the fire hydrants, what that did. The city has run cameras down. There are sewer lines looking for leaks. We can speculate on what happened and what hasn't happened. The drainage system underneath the floor is not doing what it's supposed to. That can't be helping the problem. I think the city is just as anxious as we are to try to figure out what the problem is, so that we don't repeat that, but...
Well, and the goal is, what, 50 years old? Those were the original tiles then?
Yeah, they're 50-year-old clay tiles, and whether the work outside contributed to the failure of those, the compaction that happened on the road. Nobody did anything intentionally to create an issue. It's just been a real puzzle trying to figure out what has happened. How can we get that repaired, so that when we're done, we're done and we don't have to worry about the water situation?
Well, you don't recognize a ripple effect that can sometimes happen when you do a particular project.
We've kind of gotten off... Actually, our action is simply to give permission to advertise, so that's what we need to do in tonight's meeting. So do you...
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Mr. Spurlock and Mr. Hilton, move a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. That completes our action items. Now we move into the discussion items, which are the disciplines and codes of conduct. Dr. Reiki, would you...
Thank you, Mrs. Reiki. Members of the board, in your document that you received, you have a copy of the updated handbooks. Every year, our school committees get together, review them. We also have our attorney review them, make sure that we're up to statute, our language is proper, et cetera. It is a different attorney that we're working with this year, so she had a different perspective, which is also enlightening. And she was able to align some of the language that might have been missing from the middle school that was in the high school or vice versa, some of those pieces. So it was nothing major there. Last year, one of the things that carried over through all of them, we did a lot with the bullying language, because it was a new statute, new law, and it's still important, and we've got that work done, and we've got it on our websites. What we're finding missing, and what we were encouraged to do, is also include other types of harassment in that same protocol, where there'll be a way to anonymously, or even just do it from online, report some harassment that's happening to particular individuals. So if this goes through approval in April, that will be our next step. The language is in the handouts that you're going to be reading. The next step would be to look at our bullying website links and make sure that we open that up to also report the parts of harassment, because it does talk very specific to bullying. And we've done a lot of education on what is bullying and what isn't, and a lot of times the harassment are the presteps to bullying that needs to also be reported. But it can be separated once it gets to the school as to what it is. So that's one thing that we talked about and included in the handbooks. Another one that was common was to make sure that we were communicating that we're in the parent portal or how to get to the parent portal within our handbook, so we've added that with all of the documents. We also do a lot of references to school board policy, but never included the link to the school board policy in the handbook. So that was another addition that you'll see, a very good addition, to make sure that it's easy for the community to access that link. Then there were some other individual things related to going to a nine-weeks grade. We did the policy work on changing middle school to nine weeks. For this, we have to go back now and get the handbooks up to date. So some of that type of language. The committees worked very hard about looking for those changes. The attorney helps us with some of the legalese, some of those pieces. So those were the big things. We're going to look at this, you'll have all month to look at it. I've got representatives here from each of those committees, if you have questions already prepared that you might not understood. One that we found recently is on your desks. I actually added a couple copies to replace your book, and it had to do with the recent understanding of the electronic cigarettes now being against the law. So that being the case, it's really in the same realm as tobacco, so it deserves the same level of discipline that tobacco is. So the middle school and the high school have given you addendums. It took three different pages particularly that addressed it in the high school. That's what you have in front of you. So you're replacing pages 10, 15, and 16 with your electronic. I mean, this is the cover-up, and it's only about the e-cigarettes. That's changed. And in the middle school, it was one page, page 15, but the main change was getting it from Level 3 disciplinary action to Level 4. And we're glad we caught that, because we can get that in the new handbooks. But that's the kind of work that this reading process does. Has anyone come up with any questions at this point, or are you still in the wrapping process? Everything is highlighted or color-coded or crossed out, so you don't have to read everything if you want to skip through the many pages of the documents.
This is just a discussion item. We really do not need to do any, take any action tonight. So unless you have questions or comments, then we'll move on. So we ready to move on?
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. And thank the committee too, so...
They work hard.
Okay, the 2016-17 school calendar. Dr. Hodges?
Ford, when we met with the calendar committee the first time, I thought we might be able to do two years' worth of calendars. We ran into a couple problems, and so we only brought one to you last month. We reconvened the calendar committee, and we have one that we believe that we're ready to present to you. There are some changes in this one that are brought about as to when the holidays fall, the holidays being Christmas and New Year's being on Sunday, which then the national holidays become Mondays, which changes several things. So to try to keep semesters balanced, we thought that we would try to take the Wednesday before Thanksgiving off as a non-school day. We've kicked that around for a few years. We thought this might be a good year to pilot that. This would put 91 days in first semester, 89 days in second semester, and it only has one makeup snow day in it. This calendar would start on, for teachers, on August the 1st. The first day for students would be August 3rd. The last day for students would be May the 18th, and the last day for teachers would be May the 19th. Even though our policy says that we'll adopt a calendar no later than May, some of the schools that feed into the career center have been anxious for us to move this along, so I've moved this along about as early as I can. So if you have questions, we'll be happy to try to answer those. The plan would be to bring this back to you next month for adoption.
I do have one comment or question. In January, when we, when they returned from the winter holidays or whatever, I see that you're coming back on Wednesday. Why would you not come back on Tuesday, the 3rd? I can understand not coming back on Monday, but it seems strange that you would not come back on Tuesday, the 3rd. Just see what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I do. I'm just trying to remember what conversation we had that was...
Past practice.
Well, I think what it was, was to try to make sure that we still captured 10 school days off as a break. So we start... Winter break starts on Wednesday, and so we come back on Wednesday. If we move that up to Tuesday, then it's only nine days. That would be the logic.
And I'm okay with it. I just, you know, but it would seem to me with that heading off winter and missing days, that that would be a help, but I'm just talking.
Oh, that's fine.
No, that was the 10-day, to have them on the full 10 days. And honestly, a three-day week coming back off of vacation works really well, really well.
Yeah, we tried to stay away from two-day weeks, but we didn't accomplish. You can't do that, you take the Wednesday off before Thanksgiving, but we were sensitive to that.
And other corporations had taken that Wednesday. Had Rush County taken that Wednesday out?
Yeah, I think, and I don't know if, Steve, I think there are some schools that feed into the career center that take that Wednesday.
I'm fairly certain of that. I made the comment that they're going to start doing a Wednesday before Thanksgiving. I know, I think Phil Stevenson at Centerville's probably going to discard the copy what we do, so maybe three of our sending schools, which are...
Well, I think Rush County had done it before.
Yeah, and I'm not sure about... It's my, I don't know if they did it this year, but I know Matt discussed doing it at least starting next.
They've talked about that.
It seems over to your county as well.
Somebody mentioned something about Franklin County may take that down.
I can't really remember what...
But there were a couple that, yeah, there were a couple that talked about that.
Anybody else have a comment or a question? Again, this is a discussion item, so we'll be voting at the next regular meeting. So with that being said, we'll move on to public comments. Anyone in the audience have a comment to make? Seeing none, we'll do our reports. Superintendent's discussion group reports. Anyone? Seeing none. Principal director reports. Okay, Director of Personnel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Burchett. Just a couple of quick items. Hard to believe that we're looking at 15, 16 school year when we started our recruiting trips at the end of this month already. Doesn't seem possible. But anyway, we have five planned, and we'll be looking at a variety of positions, not knowing for sure where we are fully with retirees and those that may not be returning with us next year, but that whole process will start. Be asking some principals, as they did last year, to accompany me on some of those trips, so they can get some direct input and some looking at some of the candidates we have. It'll be harder to fill openings, so it's great to work with them on that. On May 4th, for your calendar, we should do something formally, obviously. With May 4th, if you would reserve, that evening will be the recognition of our retirees. Right now, we have about five or six teachers and about seven support staff, so we'll be looking at a dozen or so. Again, it's not, we're not done with those numbers yet. Again, this is still March, but we hope a very nice evening, as we've done in the past, and recognize those that have given some of the years of service in the school corporation. We appreciate their... And then finally, the last full week during spring break, the 23rd to the 27th, Chartwell's will be serving their lunch to all the students. Anyone who's 18 years of age or younger, it's free. There's no charge for any of those folks. 11:30 to 1:30 at Maplewood Elementary, there'll be lunch, and then we're working in conjunction with the link, and some of those folks will be there to conduct board games, activities for the students as well. So it's a good five days, and looking forward to serving off a whole bunch of lunches during that week of spring break. And with that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. I know the headlines have been filled with the legislative's, legislature's work on the funding formula for schools. I prefer to reserve my comments until the dust storm actually settles and we know how badly they con does. It is not looking positive for higher poverty schools. The not-so-high-poverty schools have really done an extensive job of legislating for more money to go towards them. But we need to be mindful that the greatest impact to us is we continue to battle our declining enrollment. And, you know, the funding mechanism is plus or minus $6,000 per student, and that's where we are seeing our significant impact in this community. The decline was 86 students from the fall count to the spring count, so...
How many of those were the early graduates?
There were some midterm graduates, and that's positive.
About 23.
23? Okay.
So anyhow, but I will fill you in once we know for sure the damage that it does. We're not going to win, Dr. Reiki. We're not going to win.
Senator Wilson communicated with you?
I think Russ has had some conversations with her. The Republican caucus is very strong.
Actually, she called a meeting and included some other senators with that, and invited superintendents to give input as to how we're being impacted by complexity, and talked quite a bit about that. I will tell you, I tried to watch a little bit tonight. The budgets come out of the House, it's before the Senate, and they were taking testimony this evening on budget issues, and the only part, the only part I heard, and I really wasn't prepared for that, but it was the charter of private schools wanting a bigger piece of the pie. They want full funding for whatever funding public schools get per child, they want that, and they want complexity, and they want more. And I believe the pot's so big, and it's just going to depend on how, who gets how many dips out of the bucket. So I will say that it appears, whether it's on testing, whether it's A to F, whether it's on funding, it does appear that certain members of the General Assembly are listening more than what they have in the past, especially when you have super majorities. How is that going to, what's that going to end up at the end of the day? I don't know. But they are receiving lots of input. We'll just have to wait and see how that all transpires.
Career and technical education is the real question mark, because they were not even the least bit clear in their communication of how that funding mechanism may look. And I do not know that we'll know that anytime soon. And they'll be planning for their classes, and the high school will be planning for those classes, and will not know if those will be CTE-funded or not, so... So they'll make up the rules later.
Will it do any good to keep lobbying and keep emailing and keep writing to the various people involved in this mess?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because I get stuff all the time, and I always make a point to answer back. It's like, is anybody out there listening to the people that are actually going to deal with this mess?
It appears they're listening, but there again, we'll have to wait and see how this all comes out at the end of the day.
Okay, Dr. Reiki, Assistant Superintendent's report?
Just to let everyone know, we finished Part 1 of I-Step and made it through that. That's the extensive writing piece with the different subjects. The only thing I can, I'm reflecting on Thursday with the elementary principals more thoroughly, but the one thing I did hear was, one of the math tests, it was a little time-sensitive, like the students did not have enough time to finish. That's never happened before. So, I mean, they've always had big time windows where time was never an issue, but the complication of the problems, the number of times they got to go back and reread it because it's more difficult probably played into that. So that was one thing I've already heard. So we'll see what's happening. The big part's coming up in May, and we are back to the job of teaching and learning again, so that's the good news. And I wanted to thank the high school. I thought they did an awesome job of tonight in educating everything that...
Thank you. Dr. Hodges, Superintendent's report?
Well, I was going to have a little bit to say on the budget, and I was going to thank Randy, so I think it just...
That's right, that's right.
Any board members have for good of the cause?
I'm so proud of my middle school kids. We raised $2,300 at our charity basketball game a couple of Thursdays ago. It was amazing. The kids had a great time. There were a lot of community members there. The kids were so proud of themselves that they had raised this much money. I have to put a shout out to Sandy Stendigertoshlog and the Spartans, who unfortunately could not do their boy-girl dance because of a canceled ballgame, but that turned out to be quite a benefit for us, because they did that at the conclusion of our charity game. It brought in a lot of people. And I've spoken to her, and I said, would you be willing to do that next year? Because it did bring in so many extra people. And $2,300 is just, we've, last year we'd made $1,800. We were setting a $200 increment, and this year we made $2,300, and it's going to the Salvation Army Community Sharing Fund. And if anybody has been to the food pantry lately, you know what the lines are like, and you know that we have very, very many needy people, so this is something that a bunch of adolescents that usually get kind of a bad name for being adolescents really came through. I'm so proud of them. It was just an awful lot of fun to do. Everybody had a really good time, so. And a lot of money was raised for a very, very good cause here in Fayette County.
Thank you for that report. Anyone else? Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the meeting is adjourned. Remember, we still have work to do.